Good evening and welcome to this evening's the City Council meeting, which is adjourned at 7:00 PM on April 23rd, 2024. Please rise and join me saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the resolve of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Mikail.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano's absent. Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Here.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum this evening. The first order of business is to approve minutes from a previous City Council meeting, the April 9th, 2024 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
I already registered with the city clerk a correction to the date of the Environmental Cleanup Day, which is this Saturday originally, and the notes I had misquoted it as the 23rd. It's actually the 27th, so that's been submitted to the clerk for correction. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you Alderman Kohler, it's been noted. Seeing no additional comments or questions regarding the minutes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it and those meeting minutes are approved. At this time, we're going to move on to our mayoral appointments this evening. We do have one appointment, which consists of an appointment to the Veterans Committee here in the City of Rolling Meadows with Mr. Gregory Smith before the council. Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the appointment to the Veterans Committee? Seeing none, the question is, shall the appointment be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this appointment is approved. Thank you very much and congratulations. This brings us to a mayoral report, which we do not have this evening. Are there any ward reports? Okay, seeing none, we would typically open the floor to the public. However, there are no signatories on the sign-in sheet, so we will move towards pending ordinances. Beginning with item A, ordinance number 24-17, which is to approve deferring the imposition of the municipal push tax for the City of Rolling Meadows until January 1st, 2025, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first. Thank you Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to item B, ordinance number 24-18, to authorize the disposal of surplus city property in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Alderman Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item C, ordinance number 24-19, to approve an ordinance regarding the licensing and regulation of filling stations in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Reyes for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. For item D, ordinance number 24-20, to grant a special use for a veterinary clinic at 1327 Gulf Road. American Veterinary Group in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. For item E, ordinance number 24-21, is to approve a plat of division at Kirchhoff Fuel Resubdivision in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next items on the agenda are consent ordinances for this evening in for first reading, which consists of three items, items F through H. Does any alter person wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
F, please.
Very well. Are there any other ordinances to be, or I'm sorry, yes, are there any other ordinances to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the two ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Alderman Mikail for the second. This begins with item G, ordinance number 24-00, to amend the city code in order to increase the number of Class B1 liquor licenses and reduce the number of Class D1 liquor licenses issued in the City of Rolling Meadows. For Rolling Meadows, Shell Mart Incorporated at 2200 Elgonquin Road in for first reading. And item H, ordinance number 24-00, to amend the 2024 compensation plan for certain city employees, not subject to collective bargaining in for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us back to item F, ordinance number 24-00, to amend the alcohol liquor code to approve a Class GA liquor license for video gaming for Sabroso Borrito III Incorporated, doing business as Los Dos Pollos Grill at 2216 Elgonquin Road in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Alderman Boucher, you had pulled this from the consent, so you have first comment this evening.
I wanted to bring this up to possibly push this past our May Committee of the Whole, where we will be discussing gambling licenses and to give myself a little bit more of an opportunity to understand the city's view and the city's path forward with gambling licenses and just do a little bit more research on my own. So I was asking to have this tabled until after that May Committee of the Whole meeting.
And Alderman Boucher, are you looking then for this to return for council consideration at the May 28th meeting?
Yes.
The committee of hold on the 21st and then the following meeting will be at the 20th?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the motion before the council is to table item F for consideration at the May 28th City Council meeting. Is there a second? Alderman Bud Matts has made the second. Will the clerk please, is there any discussion I should ask about tabling this item? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
My only question is whether City Manager Savo and our Human Services Director will have sufficient time to respond to some of our concerns.
Yes, Alderman Kohler, we had planned to have a conversation about our video gaming licensing at the May Committee of the Whole, and we should have sufficient time to be able to prepare for any questions the council has, as well as to have thorough discussion on some proposed possible revisions to the code.
Dr. Davis. Thank you, no further comment.
And just a technical correction, the motion on the table, well, no pun intended, the motion on the floor is to postpone to the next meeting as opposed to table it. So for the record and for the clerk.
Thank you for the clarification. This is why we have a parliamentarian as well, so we will be postponing until the May 28th City Council meeting. Any other questions or discussion regarding postponing the item? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall item F be postponed until the May 28th City Council meeting? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this item is postponed until the May 28th meeting. At this time, we'll move on to new business. We have item I, which is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for April 23rd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Reyes for the first.
Second.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to our consent resolutions, which consist of six items, items J through O. Does any alter person wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolution? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Item N.
Are there any other resolutions to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the five remaining resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. This consists of item J, Resolution Number 24-R-46, to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Rolling Meadows and the Rolling Meadows Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 3075, adding battalion chiefs to the bargaining unit. Item K, Resolution Number 24-R-47, to award the 2024 Road Reconstruction Project to Builders Paving LLC in an amount of $728,000 in no sense. Item L, Resolution Number 24-R-48, to award a contract for 2024 Reconstruction Observation Engineering Services to Christopher V. Burke Engineering in a not-to-exceed amount of $69,694 in no sense. Item M, Resolution Number 24-R-49, to authorize the purchase of asphalt material for fiscal year 2024 from Builders Asphalt in a not-to-exceed amount of $125,000 in no sense. And item O, Resolution Number 24-R-51, to authorize the city to shortlist engineering firms for various utilities as defined by the request for qualification or RFQ. The question is, shall the five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. This brings us to item N, Resolution Number 24-R-50, to adopt the City of Rolling Meadows Vehicle Replacement Policy. Is there a motion to consider this resolution before the council this evening?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Alderman Kohler, you pulled this from the consent resolution, so you have the first comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like my fellow council members to consider an amendment to the policy, which was discussed at the Committee of the Whole regarding environmental considerations. The amendment would be, and I can send this to the clerk afterwards, the amendment would be in Section 3 under Equipment Replacement Evaluation and Criteria, to amend it to add environmental considerations. When replacing vehicles, the City of Rolling Meadows will consider the environmental impact of new vehicles purchased and preferentially replace high-emission vehicles with the most environmentally efficient models available that are suitable for each vehicle's task. When considering the vehicle replacement, the City of Rolling Meadows will estimate the current vehicle and proposed vehicles' replacement greenhouse gas emissions, and I give a formula for calculating that. It's a simple formula, and purchase vehicles that have low emissions. Also, an amendment to Exhibit A, which would put a point system in place for low-emission vehicles, ultra-low emission vehicles, super-ultra-low emission vehicles, and then zero-emission vehicles, that would give us some impact, some way of evaluating whether our purchases are more environmentally efficient. I bring this forth to my fellow council members for consideration because I think with our sustainability plan, we want to be very serious about how we're moving forward. And I know that our Vehicle Replacement Committee, many of, some of our members in the council are part of that, do consider electric vehicles and environmentally friendly vehicles. But I think in the replacement policy, we want to actually put that a little bit more concrete in how we do that evaluation. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Kohler. So in summary, for the council this evening, you're requesting a review of the environmental considerations when replacing vehicles at the City of Rolling Meadows as it adheres to the policy, and also adjusting the point evaluation system as well.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we do need a second for that to be considered. Thank you Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the amendments proposed by Alderman Kohler? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
So given this, I'd like to bring this back to the Vehicle Replacement Committee at our next meeting and evaluate that because I think that there's some vehicles that this is appropriate for, other vehicles that it's less appropriate for, and I don't want to arbitrarily make an environmentally friendly decision while making a safety decision that may impede our ability to respond in emergency situations. So whatever amendment that you were going to provide to Judy in writing, if you could provide that, we can table this until the next time, after the next council meeting, after the Vehicle Replacement Committee meets, and then we could come back with a recommendation or any comments from the Vehicle Committee as a whole on what you're asking.
Is there any other discussion or comments regarding the motion that we're dealing with at this time, which is a request for an amendment? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
I would accept what Alderman Bud Matts is proposing to postpone the vote and let the amendment be considered by the Vehicle Replacement.
Okay, so then that's a different motion, so we can either, go ahead.
So the motion to postpone, if it is seconded, will supersede the motion to amend, and the council can vote on that.
Very well, so then the motion to postpone the proposed amendment until after the Vehicle Replacement Committee is able to convene on, when is the next date that we would be able to get this on the agenda?
It would be probably the second week of June.
For a second week of June, we have one City Council meeting on the 26th where this would come back then.
And neither of us will be there.
So then in July, we're looking for the Vehicle Replacement Resolution to come, or the policy to come back would be in July. So then at this time, we need a second for a motion, yes, Alderman Kohler.
No, I'm seconding.
Okay, you're the one who's postponing, so I need someone else to be.
No, Alderman Vice Mayor.
Oh, you postponed it, and then we have a second here. We're good to go. Thank you so much. I've got our deputy clerk as well shaking her head. Excellent. So at this time then, the question is, shall the Vehicle Replacement Policy be postponed until a July City Council meeting for consideration after the proposed amendment is given time for review at that committee meeting? Will the clerk please call the roll? Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this resolution is postponed until July. At this time, we will continue with other business and reports, which begins with mayor proclamations. We have three of them this evening. So the first that we have is our 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, which begins May 5th and goes through May 11th, 2024. And for that proclamation, I will begin with saying that the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, where it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore I, Lars Sanoyka, Mayor of the City of Rolling Meadows, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Deputy City Clerk Judy Bras, and to all the municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And to that, we do have the proclamation here as well, which has been signed, and I am now presenting to our deputy clerk here this evening. Thank you. This brings us to our second proclamation regarding Building Safety Month, which is the entire month of May in 2024. And with that, the City of Rolling Meadows is committed to honoring that our growth and strength depend on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas modern building codes are established through a consensus building process that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment in order to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant professionals who ensure the safe construction and maintenance of buildings, including building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore I, Lars Sanoyka, Mayor of the City of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. And accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in various Building Safety Month activities. Thank you very much. I also have a written proclamation here as well for Building Safety Month. However, I also understand that this is an effort, as mentioned in the proclamation, for all city officials, and therefore we will be giving this to the city as a whole at the end. And then lastly, we have our final proclamation for Arbor Day. Arbor Day, which comes around in April every single year. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed at the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2024 is the 152nd anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Rolling Meadows has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the 30th year by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways, now therefore I, Lars Sanoyka, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2024, Arbor Day in the City of Rolling Meadows. And with that, we will continue to other businesses and reports. At this time, we do not have a city clerk report, but we do have city staff reports. And to that, I will defer to City Manager Rob Savo for our community items of interest.
Thank you, Mayor City Council. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be holding a prescription drug takeback day this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Simply drive up and drop off any unwanted medicines or drugs in front of the parking lot at City Hall located at 3600 Kirchhoff Road. We highly encourage people not to dispose of prescription medicines through the trash or through flushing it down the toilet, as has been done in the past. Bring those in, we'll make sure that they're disposed of properly. All veterans are invited to ride or walk in the upcoming Rolling Meadows parades for Memorial Dam May 25th or on the 4th of July. If interested in participating in one or both of these events, please contact Assistant to the City Manager Lori Sezak at 847-870-9005 to sign up. The City's Family Services Day The city's Family Services Day event will be held on Saturday, May 11th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 2260 Algonquin Parkway here in Rolling Meadows. Visitors will be treated to a free barbecue and entertainment. For more information, please contact Human Services Director Dr. Natalia Nieves at 847-870-2636. Planning for this year's 4th of July festivities is underway. The city is currently accepting applications from groups, businesses, and individuals that would like to participate in the city's 4th of July parade, which will be held on Thursday, July 4th, at 11:30 AM along the Owl Lane, along Owl Lane. Applications to participate are due by Friday, Friday, June 21st, and there is no fee. For more information, please visit the city's website at cityrm.org. The city is excited to announce Bytes and Beats on Kirchhoff, a new food truck and music event debuting this summer. Grab a variety of eats and groove to the music on the 4th Wednesday of each month, starting at 4:30 PM until dusk, beginning on May 22nd and running monthly through September 25th. The event will take place on the grounds of the Community Church at 2720 Kirchhoff Road, right in the heart of the Kirchhoff Road Business Corridor. Adult beverages will be available for sale courtesy of Rep's Place in Phoenix Flame. Please note that outside food and beverage aren't allowed at the events in order to support the participating food vendors. We look forward to a fun summer packed full of events here in Rolling Meadows. For more information on Bytes and Beats and other planned community events, check the city's website again at cityrm.org. That's it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have the March 2024 financial report. However, if there are any questions, please contact Finance Director Molly Talkington, and she'd be happy to get those answered for you. Lastly, we have our May 14th, 2024 city council draft agenda, which is available this evening. And to that, I will defer to city manager Rob Savo.
Thank you again. The draft agenda is included in the agenda packet. One quick item of note, based on tonight's action of the council, we will postpone the item pertaining to the Class GA liquor license for video gaming for Los Dos Pollos. A couple of other items of note on here that are pending, or include an amendment to the city code regarding water and sewer connections. Additionally, under resolutions, we have a approval of the Algonquin Wilkie Right-of-Way Funding Agreement, and that's for roadway intersection, planned intersection improvements at that intersection. And lastly, approving an amended electrical aggregation plan and governance as follow-up from a public hearing that the city council had held. The agenda itself is subject to be updated and will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act prior to the meeting day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Just wanted to really quickly thank the city staff who went to Carl Sandberg Junior High on the 12th and participated in their WOW Day. It was really great to see so many different city departments there talking to kids about the opportunities there is, there are in local government. And I would like to thank Glenn and Cole for putting together a very lovely presentation for the two of us to use. So I just wanted to thank you guys all for participating in that activity.
Thank you. Are there any other matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, there is a request to go into closed session this evening. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act regarding personnel, and under section 2C5